Agenda, regular session, Monday, November ninth, twenty twenty six P M. Animal, the library learning center via Zoom. One point zero roll call.
From?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Numba?
Here.
Stout?
Here.
Capron?
Here.
Let it be known that all members of the council are present. Two point zero pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you.
The United States.
To the republic, with which we stand, under God, indivisible, and ever new and just.
Rebecca, would you just again recap for those that are attending the meeting virtually? How they can gain your acknowledgement if they want to address the council?
Absolutely, and I will preface everything with there is a new audio and video system set up in the library meeting room, so please forgive any technical difficulties we may have tonight. If you would like to speak, you may at any point raise your hand or send me a message in chat. You can raise your hand. If you don't see an option to do that by clicking on the participants option, and that should bring up a box where you should see an option that says raise your hand, so you can just raise your hand at that point. Nobody is joining us over the phone, so I won't give those instructions yet. Once you have let me know that you'd like to speak, I will wait until the mayor opens the public comment and let you know that it's your turn. And somebody just joined us by phone, so if you'd like to speak on an issue, raise your hand by dialing in star nine, and that will let me know that you'd like to talk.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca. We do have a lengthy meeting tonight. So as we go into each individual item, most of them are by roll vote only per listed. With some of the council members being virtual as well, I ask that we take a roll vote for all final decisions this evening. With that, three point zero approval of agenda.
I'll go through.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the agenda in second. Is there any other discussion? Beth, would you conduct the roll vote?
Capron?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Mockart?
Yeah.
Smith?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Motion to approve the agenda carried unanimously. Four point zero, motion to approve the minutes from the following meetings. Four point one, October twenty second, twenty twenty, regular council meeting.
No move.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the minutes is submitted. Any further discussion? Beth, please conduct the roll vote.
Mockart?
Yeah.
Smith?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Capron?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimously. Five point zero, public hearings. Five point one, public hearing on proposed amendment to Highway one fifty one urban renewal area. I will open the public hearing. Beth, have you received any inquiry or feedback on this?
I have not.
There's no discussion.
Public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion on the matter? Beth, please conduct the roll vote.
Zomba?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Capron?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Mockart?
Yeah.
Motion carried unanimous. Six point zero, proclamations, none. Seven point zero, old business. Seven point one, discussion and possible action on R F P for wayfinding signage. Derek Lumsman?
Good evening. Hello? Yeah, it's on the green light. Oh, okay. So can you hear me? Yeah.
Yes.
That just goes through the. Oh, perfect. Okay, so I was here at the end of September, and we discussed a request for proposal going out for wayfinding signage design. We sent that out after you all attended that meeting. The bids were due back, the proposals were due back, and mid-October, the task force met, went over it, we only received one back. I sent that out to the original three companies, and we sent out a few more. This was the only company that responded. They also responded the first time, so their A S I out of.
Any idea why the others didn't respond?
One of them never got back to me. The one that originally came in the first time said that they, by the time the R F P come out, they got back to the set of projects, and they were both not. And then we didn't hear back from some of the others.
Derek, if we knew what kind of signs we wanted, or what kind of signs the committee wanted, could they be done at the reformatory?
Yeah, so what this bid does, it goes all the way through fabrication signs. And the thought behind the task force side was that, once we got to that point, we had all the different designs and layouts and everything. We put that out to bid with the whole bid on it, and committed as the low bidder.
Gotcha. Thank you.
If you look at the examples, they've got some good references. I mean, they did the downtown district of Cedar Rapids, and it's more than just your plain, standard D O T, orange and orange or blue option signs. It's more of a theme. Kind of more the inviting feel is what they kind of look at in drawing people to the downtown and different destination areas. I think the schools would be a big one, too, especially with that intersection being closed now.
With just one person responding to this, or one company responding, we're not really getting competitive bids, but we have the ability to negotiate with those, with that company?
You can. I mean, you could always say, based on what you want, but you probably come back with a specific number of the reason why. In the R P, we laid out several different milestones that we wanted in the case of the thing, and so they based their bid on that. So you can try to negotiate for less or more to be what you wanted, and so we can negotiate.
Yeah.
Because I was probably the first couple we had, and then they were all different rates of price. So we put out the R P to help modify that and get it. We did sit about the, I think it was about six, I'm sure back when we were on, and they did it for the first time.
Hey Derek, hey Derek, can you talk, can you talk into the mic? We're having trouble hearing you out here.
I was just gonna say that.
Is my, so you could, I'll simplify that, you could. I just don't know what you would negotiate down or different.
We might have to rely on possibly going to the prison possibly.
Well, on this, on this particular R P, I would say no, because this is just the design. The prison will not design.
No, I know that, but once we get that figured out.
Yeah, once, once, say you approve this R F P, and then they go through, they do all the design work, you get all your signs and your process and some things like that. The best thing to do, depending on what they think the cost essence would be on the number of signs, would be to put out another R F P, take it to the prison for them to do, as well as other companies that might be interested. And then, then you get a price on that, and that would just depend on number of signs.
Derek, did you give us the R S P price?
Um, it's it's under ten like we guessed, but I mean, yeah, eight thousand nine hundred dollars.
So are, when, when they do this, are they locating where these signs should be placed, and how many signs, and so forth?
Yes, that'll be in conjunction with the city of the downtown task force, to make sure that we get everything we want on them and in the right places. But they would specify, here's where we think they should go based on traffic count, things like that, and then make sure they're D O T standards, because all signs still have to meet those specifications.
And probably part of the reason you only got the one R F P, I'm guessing, it's the difficult part is putting together this, the study, the where they should go. I mean, once you got on a platter, and this is the sign we need to be made, that's that's a lot easier to, for people to put bids in on, I would say.
Well, sorry, the biggest problem is just not a lot of companies do wayfinding signage. So the fact that we were only finding six that did is impressive, because I know the last time I went out to one, there were only four. And then some of them do fabrication, some of them don't. So it's really not, just not a lot of area where there's a lot of competition. The time constraint could have been part of it. The ones I talked to said it really wasn't, but the fact that we were trying to get this done, so any signs could be fabricated, and hopefully by next summer for ragbride, if they have that, was also part of the reason we decided to approach it now. The companies I talked to said the timing wasn't an issue, it was that they had a product.
Does the council have any further questions for Derek? I, I know the task force has been very active in pursuing this. It was one of the items that was on their radar to, to try to launch, you know, early in the spring, as we go into the tourist season for next year, as well as a ragbride coming into Animalso. I see Sarah Rickles is present. Sarah, do you have any comments regarding this for the council? Okay. Jeff, you've been active with the task force. Any more comments from you?
I don't think so, no. It was a, it was one of the high priorities, achievable, you know, things to get done based on the assessment that was done last fall, and I think just, it's something that needs to be done. Even besides them saying it, I, I think it's something that's has needed done for a while anyway.
I would certainly concur with that.
Does this require a motion to move forward on this?
If, if the council is looking to move forward with the way signage, I would say yes, that a motion to accept the request for, quote, R F P, I should say.
I'll make a motion to act upon the R F P for wayfinding signage.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made in second to accept the proposal on the wayfinding signage. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Beth, would you conduct the roll vote?
Smith?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Mockart?
Yeah.
Stout?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Capron?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Thanks, Derek. Seven point two, discussion of possible action on the downtown nodes. I know, again, the downtown task force, as well as the hometown pride groups, have been working in parallel to come up with some ideas for the nodes. They're, they're really thinking outside of the box, in a progressive mindset. Not trying to compare to any other communities, but if anyone has seen the nodes in this community of Macokota, really can get an understanding of how we can enhance these downtown nodes. I, I do know that the city council here recent, in recent past, has taken on, or taken responsibility for the nodes back. I, I believe that if these two groups continue to work, that they can come up with some pretty good proposals that would, would be a community betterment project, and really enhance the downtown more than it is right now. So that's why I ask for this to be placed on the agenda.
And I do.
To approve the downtown node action.
Well, we, let's hold off a second. I'm not sure, if I could, so from the downtown task force side of this, I guess we were, we threw around the idea. I guess the discussion kind of started when there hasn't been a lot happening with them the last few years. We looked at getting kind of an outside professional opinion to, to put a plan together. Now, I, I do understand that a lot more of the city staff may be on board with working on this project. So if, if that's the case, and the city can, can make something work right away next year, I think we've, would be open to that as well, I guess. Bottom line is, we need to get them going, and, you know, first thing, you know, I'm thinking first part of May, to have them done and rolling, just to get them back on track. I, I, I still think the group, just regardless, the group wants to get the downtown looking good. That's, that's, that's the bottom line. As far as looking at getting a professional opinion, outside opinion, I mean, that's kind of the two avenues we're, we're kind of at, so. Kay, I didn't mean to cut you off, Kay, that's just kind of.
I was under the impression, it was a down, it was an outside group that was coming in to evaluate and offer suggestions on ways to do the downtown nodes in a positive way. Didn't I read someplace it was Snyder? Or they had submitted an R F P for five hundred dollars, or did I dream that?
Well, Kay, you saw that they, they offered five hundred dollars to come in and do a two-hour roundtable discussion. That was not the design.
Okay.
So that would be for them to come in. Go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, we just turned this over to Parks and Rec and Streets Department. They haven't had a chance to do it because they just got it. I don't know, from what I've read, that the task force has even communicated to Shelley and the Streets Department about what they want to do, and and what Shelley and the Streets may have a plan for, which is kind of disheartening that there wouldn't be some communication there. I'm not sure, the other thing is, I'm not sure who all is on this task. I know Leanna and Sarah, and I think Derek, I don't, I'm not sure who the other individuals are.
Rod, myself, and Sharon Minger.
Well, that's not true. Because I looked up the, the resolution, and the resolution is city administrator, director of Jones County Economic Development, director of Animalso Chamber, an elected official from the city of Animalso, appointed by the council, and free property business owners. So Rod's not on. And Jeff, when Kay mentioned that have you put on, you said you wanted to think about it, so you weren't actually ever appointed. So I'm having a little tough time with it. Because it says that in order to proceed with anything, the task force needs to have at least four of the seven members present, and the both. So you just rattled off two people that aren't necessarily members of the task force official.
Well, it sounds like I should withdraw my motion. We should make sure there's communication between and among the task force, the city parks and recs, the streets, and go from there before we do anything more.
I would like to see some communication there, and then after they have their talk, maybe then we can talk about, do we need to have outside information presented, but and then I think we also need to talk about the task force, because evidently, we've got two people that are acting that aren't officially acting on the task.
Well, I, I was, I was appointed at that, at that meeting. I mean, I, I.
Oh, you're, yeah, excuse me, you said, I want to think about it, and Kay took your name off.
Well, I mean, I, I've taken it. I mean, if anybody else would like to arm wrestle for it, I mean, I'd be more than gladly to, to hop on there, too. I.
No, that's not the point. The point is that officially, this is an official task force that will fit. So officially, it needs to be done the way the resolution was written.
Okay, well, if it needs, if it needs to be, to be put on there to officially make myself on there, we probably should have, if it was presented to have the city administrator, I know Jacob was on there prior to when he left, we probably should have Beth back on there, too. The interim.
I'm not sure why she hasn't been invited to those meetings.
Yeah. I, I guess with the discussion people are seeing is, I'm trying to say here, I, I, I think it's great if we can, that idea was thrown around from the outside professional to, to give us some insight, but I would say bottom line, if, if the departments can work together and make this thing really good, I'm all for that, because I think that's, at the end of the day, that's what the task force wants, is just to have the downtown look, look great. I go with, I mean, if the streets and, and whatever departments make it a whole city project, I'm great with that. I, I think, I think the biggest thing is just getting something going, and, and let's just get it going first thing in the spring. I mean, let's make it look nice, you know, first part of May. I, I it's just been going so long where it's looking drab. I, I think we should just go with it and make it a top priority in the spring to get this done.
Well, I agree with you on that. I, I just know that, you know, Hometown Pride had it for two years. And.
I think Jeff would be good for the, I mean, I, I can just tell by the way he was talking about it, that, that he's in, in it a hundred percent. I think we should be looking at themes and, and different things that we could do. I mean, we, right now, we have no information as to what these nodes are going to be like. I think you need to decide amongst the group that's doing this, what you think we should do, come up with some ideas, and then, then we can bring them here to the council, we can sit down and start hashing that stuff out. Right now, we have no information on these nodes at all, then we this, this, this year, we had stones sitting out there.
Yeah, that was, that was, Hometown Pride had that this year.
Yeah.
And we, we turned that over to Parks and Rec.
Correct.
And
Correct.
The Streets Department.
So what, what I think needs to be done first, they need to get some information together with some ideas, and then we can sit down and discuss this.
Well, I think Shelley's been working on it.
Okay.
And I think, I think it'll be good, like this winter, whoever wants or is planning to be involved, get, you know, get a few meetings together, and I know it's already happened somewhat, but just to get a really good game plan, and I'm, I know I'm not even maybe officially appointed to this group, that maybe that needs to be an, an action item, and, and for best part, but we're not, I don't think the, don't get the wrong idea that the task force is trying to take this over. I guess it was brought up on the assessment, and so we're, we're looking into it. I mean, if, if, if the city departments can go with it and run with it and make the downtown look great, that's, you know, that's, that's what we want. So it's not that we're trying to, we're not, I don't want it to be taken that we're trying to take it over and, and, and all that. We just, we just want it to, for the city's sake and everyone's sake, the downtown to, to be spruced up. You know, especially things like ragbride coming through, so. And maybe that need, like you said, maybe that needs to be another agenda item to, to put a few people on here and get it hammered down. I thought we were good, but maybe that detail got missed, so.
Well, I, I have got no problem putting you on that, that task force, yeah, don't get me wrong on that, but I think we need to give Shelley an opportunity, because she has been working on this to at least present her designs, and not just cut her out and cut the parks, cut the streets out. We need to at least give them an opportunity.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree. Do we have to officially put Jeff on? Can we do that tonight?
No.
Next time? Okay.
And I don't know if Shelley's, if Shelley's on here or not, can Rebecca, I don't know if she has anything to add?
I don't believe Shelley's here.
Okay. Okay. So.
I withdraw the motion.
Okay. But that, that's more or less, I think, why the request was put on the agenda. I mean, it had been put on before the city would take it over, but more or less to kind of talk out where we're at, as far as getting it done. And like I said, it sounds like some legwork's been started. I don't know, there has to be all or nothing. I mean, at some point, once we get them going, maybe we could maybe not Snyder, someone to, to get some alternative ideas, you know, where, just to get them back to where they were, with how they've been for a long time, but at some point, maybe exploring some, some new, new features or, or new ways of utilizing certain areas. You know, maybe get a little creative on some different ideas for the, the parklets, instead of taking up parking spots, doing something with the corner nodes where you could put tables with the restaurant, you know, different things like that, so. But.
Well, and I would like the task force, the next time they meet, to make sure they tell that when you're meeting and where you're meeting at.
Okay. We can do that.
Any further discussion with the nodes? Does the public committee comment on this agenda item? If not, we will move into new business. Eight point zero, new business. Eight point one, resolution to declare necessity and establish an urban renewal area pursuant to section four zero three point four of the Code of Iowa, and to approve an urban renewal plan amendment for Highway one fifty one urban renewal area.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Beth, would you conduct the roll vote?
Zomba?
Yes.
Mockart?
Yeah.
Smith?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Capron?
Yeah.
Stout?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Eight point two. First reading of an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the November twenty two, twenty twenty addition to the, to the Highway one fifty one urban renewal area pursuant to section four zero three point one nine of the Code of Iowa.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Beth, conduct the roll vote, please.
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Capron?
Yeah.
From?
Yes.
Mockart?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimous. Possible waiver of second, third readings and adoption.
Move to waive.
The motion, do we have a second?
Move to waive second and third readings.
Second.
There's been a motion to waive second and third readings and it's been second. Any further discussion? Beth, would you conduct that roll vote?
Stout?
Yes.
Capron?
Yeah.
Zomba?
Yes.
Mockart?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion to waive second thirty, third readings carried unanimously. Eight point three, resolution setting a date of meeting at which it is proposed to approve a development agreement with Blue Track Inc., including annual appropriation tax increment payments.
Move to approve.
Set the meeting date for the next regular city council meeting?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Beth, conduct the roll vote, please.
Mockart?
Yes.
Capron?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimous. Eight point four, resolution setting a date of meeting at which is proposed to approve a development agreement with Scale Tech Limited, including annual appropriation tax increment payments.
Move to set the meeting date at the next regular council meeting, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Beth, conduct the roll vote.
Capron?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Mockart?
Yeah.
Smith?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimous. Eight point five, review and approval of annual urban renewal report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Beth, would you conduct the roll vote?
Smith?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Mockart?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Capron?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimous. Eight point six, resolution obliging funds for the urban renewal tax increment, tax revenue fund for payment of annual appropriation tax increment financed obligations, which shall come due in the next succeeding fiscal year for Fairway Stores Incorporated.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Beth, conduct a roll vote.
Capron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Mockart?
Yeah.
Motion carried unanimously. Eight point seven, resolution setting a public hearing to November 23rd, 2020 at 6:00 PM at the Animals Library and, and via Zoom for the purchase of real estate.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Beth, conduct the roll vote.
Smith?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Capron?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Mockart?
Yeah.
Motion carried unanimous. Eight point eight, discussion of possible action on an RFP for a Phase One environment site assessment for real estate purchase.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Um, we have two different RFPs here, one from MSA and one from EV Solutions. So would you like to add which one you prefer to go with?
Sorry, Beth, it was hard to hear you.
Um, so we have two different RFPs. One from EV Solutions and one from MSA. Um, there's only a hundred dollars difference between the two, so one is nineteen hundred and the other one's two thousand. John Frey, our attorney, had recommended, um, EV Solutions was a little more detailed, um, even though it's the one that's two thousand. Um, so up to you. I'm, I'm sure they're both capable of doing the environment study for that. What?
And, hey, Beth, this is two parcels, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the bigger parcel, we currently, is that, is that the one where we currently, a lot of our yard waste sits on? Is that?
It is.
It is? Okay.
Yeah. So yeah, it's the larger one. It's actually got that frontage street and the yard waste and then also the substation parcel will be the other.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Well, if EB was recommended, that's probably what we should go with because that person should have a better idea than I.
Sounds good.
Any further discussion? Beth, would you conduct a roll vote?
Cap, or, yep, Capron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Mockart?
Yeah.
From?
Yes.
Motion to approve the acceptance carried unanimous. Eight point nine, review and approval of the annual financial report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Beth, conduct the roll vote.
Zomba?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Capron?
Yeah.
From?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mockart?
Yeah.
Motion carried unanimous. Eight point one zero, review and approval, review and approve the tentative budget calendar for the fiscal year 2020 budget. Excuse me. Fiscal year 22 budget.
The different departments have seen this and so they know the expectations for them?
They do. Yeah, we did have a department meeting and we talked about the schedule. And, you know, kind of how, how they wanted to present.
So most of them are butted up with their regular council meeting. Looks like there's, oh, I see, just one special one.
Yes. Um, which, we can divide that into two if you, if you want to.
I would like to have one final budget meeting to go over everything after we go through.
Those.
Yeah, and where, and maybe I'm missing, where's the outside penalties?
Um, that'll just be a line item on one of the agendas.
Okay.
If there's no further discussion, we have an entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the tentative budget calendar.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Beth, conduct the roll vote, please.
From?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mockart?
Yeah.
Zomba?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Capron?
Yeah.
Motion to approve carried unanimous. Eight point one one, renewal of liquor license Tyler and Downey.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second to approve. Any further discussion? Beth, roll vote, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Mockart?
Yeah.
Zomba?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Capron?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimous. Eight point one two, review and approval of October 2020 treasures report.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Beth, conduct the roll vote, please.
Mockart?
Yeah.
Zomba?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Capron?
Yeah.
From?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion to approve treasury report carried unanimously. Eight point one three, review and approval of current bills.
So on for the, the Kraus Plumbing and Heating 402 North Williams Street, we're going ahead and gonna pay that?
We are. So we'll pay it and then we'll do the assessment.
To the property?
Correct, yeah. So yeah, Patrick's working on getting a contract signed for that.
Okay.
And then we'll send it to the assessor's office.
I see we paid SAI 32,000 for tree removal. Did we have anybody else?
We did.
We used, or was it just all SAI?
Um, just all SAI on that part. Um, we have one other company that we're trying out right now too. Um, and I am working on, um, the FEMA claim with that included in it.
Okay.
Yeah, with, with Rich's comment, I know he does a good job, but there's another guy in town I'd, you know, like to give an equal shot at too, getting some business. You know, if they're both having to put in bids, it keeps, it keeps them competitive and give the city the best deal too.
Well, I understand under kind of emergency situations that you can't always get competitive bids, but we can always have multiple sources to go to and try to at least utilize them.
Any other questions on the bills? Entertain a motion to pay?
Move to approve.
Okay.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Beth, will you conduct the roll vote?
Mockart?
Yeah.
From?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Capron?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Motion to approve payment of the bills carried unanimously. Nine point zero, city administrators report.
I don't really have much to report, other than everything that was on the agenda. The annual financial reports complete, so I'll get that submitted right away. I'm working on the TIF debt report for the county. Just about done with that. We'll have to pass the, I need to get the downtown information on there for the grant match. And then I'll be able to submit that one. We're working on getting the data pulled on for the accounting system. It's proving to be a little more difficult than I thought. Um, but we'll get there. Um, other than that, we did have a department meeting, talked about quite a few things. Uh, mainly the budget and, oh, we're gonna get that done this year. That's it.
Thank you, Beth. Does the council have any questions for Beth on, on the city administrators report? Not. Ten point zero, mayor and councils report. Ten point one, mayor's report. I have no report at this time. Ten point two, council reports.
Emergency management, the only thing Brenda said, just PPE quadrupled in price. So it's draining the budget. Well, solid waste, Matt, and they're gonna have a five-year survey. See, they're gonna be emailed to everybody and they want, like, it's gonna be emailed to the city and emailed to everybody in the county and the whatever, in the cities. And it's just a, an idea of how they get their garbage collected and all that stuff, so. It's pretty much all I've got.
Parks and Rec has not met since the last meeting.
All right, thanks, everyone, for those reports. Eleven point zero, public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anybody in the council chambers, uh, the library, that would wish to address the council? Rebecca, is there anyone virtually that would like to address the council?
Uh, it does not appear to be anybody. Uh, if you're wanting to address the council.
If not, we will move to twelve point zero closed session. I thought I seen Patrick O'Connell, uh, enter into the uh, council area. Patrick, is it your understanding that entering into this closed session per Iowa State Code Section 21.5I to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment hiring performance or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that person's reputation and that the individuals have requested this closed session? Do you acknowledge that we uh, it, it permits us to enter?
Your honor, I do. My, it's my opinion that an individual who's hired is under consideration. That individual will have to submit it. Your honor, I do, uh, my, it's my opinion, we have an individual who's hired is under consideration, that individual has submitted a formal request, this being held in closed session and copy that request.
Pat- Patrick, I think the mic is not on.
At the bottom, gray, gray button. On the side, and then a green light. A little gray button.
Yes, so there's a ledge.
At the bottom, there, you got, they're green now. So you have a, an individual under consideration, uh, whose competency and fitness for the position is under consideration, that person has requested. That this matter be held in closed session, I have a copy of that written request, reports my opinion then under Iowa Code Section, uh, twenty one point five one subparagraph I. You are lawfully allowed to enter closed session at this point, to, uh, conduct that examination and, uh, consider those.
All right, thank you, Patrick.
I'll make a motion to enter into closed session for Iowa State Code Section twenty one point five I.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Beth, would you conduct a roll vote on this, please?
Capron.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Zumba.
Yes.
Mockert.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
From.
Yeah.
But it be known that the council unanimously, uh, decided this isn't under the decision to go into closed session.
Okay, just to confirm, um, I'll be sending. Kay, Jeff, Rod, and the library meeting room into closed session only.
Correct.
Um, for those who have not done this yet on Zoom, I am going to open the, um, the breakout rooms. And they should be, they should be, uh, set to go, um, there should be an option that pops up that asks you to enter the breakout room. Go ahead and click enter the breakout room when that appears. All right, so it looks like they have all entered closed session. Everybody who is still with us, you are more than welcome to, um, just hang out here and wait for them to end closed session, when they are done, they will just pop back in here and move on to thirteen point oh. So I guess just sit back, relax, and, uh. Wait and see when they get back.